Alrighty. Jumping ahead, item three now, having cleared one and two before we started recording. If the clerk will call the roll.
Supervisor Johnson, Supervisor Pat Breslin, Supervisor Headland, Supervisor Score, Supervisor Steen, Supervisor Zanz, Supervisor Gary Bjork, Supervisor Willsey, Supervisor Quinn, Supervisor Rogers, Supervisor Whittle, Supervisor Kneer, Supervisor Barrier, Supervisor Calabrese, Supervisor Keeter. Supervisor Vogel.
Oh wait, keep Don's online, Don's online.
Sorry Supervisor Keeter is online.
Here, yeah.
Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Sean Breslin, Supervisor Vandermeulen, Supervisor Robinson.
Here.
Supervisor Robinson is online, Supervisor Morehouse, Supervisor Hagan, Supervisor Thomas, Supervisor Prochnow, Supervisor Gilbert, Supervisor Larry Bjork, Supervisor Bauer, Supervisor Lino, Supervisor Hartung, Chairman McCullough.
Here. That's everyone, I, that's, that's perfect, I would like to take a moment to remind supervisors that it is our responsibility to be at our committees and at this board. And if we are not available to let our chairs, in my case, the board, me, in the case of committees, the committee chair, that you will not be here. I know life happens for everybody and sometimes you can't make it. But, but please do at least make your chair aware, all it takes is an email. Thank you. Now, on to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion Supervisor Steen? And Supervisor Morehouse, seconds, any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? There we go, any opposed? Alright, motion passes. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and other communications. Do we have anything? We do not appear to have anything at the moment. Public comment, this is the moment where we allow members of the public to come up and speak for up to three minutes. Do we have anyone from the public who intends to take advantage of our public comment period? Going once? Going twice, alright, closing public comment, oh, so we do have, we do have a couple.
On Monday, October 17th, 2022, at 1:44 PM. Doris Meyer, the Clerk Treasurer of the Town of Tainter, submitted the following. Good evening, at the October 13th, 2022, Town of Tainter Board meeting, the Town Board discussed and unanimously decided to request to exclude the Town of Tainter properties from the Tainter Lake District that is being proposed, thank you, respectfully submitted, Doris Meyer. On Tuesday, October 18th, 2022, at 10:28 PM. George Rash, Rash, forgive me, submitted the following. Hello Andrew, as I won't be able to attend tomorrow's meeting, I'm writing to express my view on the topic of the proposed Tainter Lake District. As a lake shore owner, I'm 100% in support of the intent to improve the water quality of Tainter Lake. I want to express my gratitude to all the partners on the project planning committee, as well as the engaged community members for all the efforts to make this beautiful body of water safer, more enjoyable, and more valuable to those who use it recreationally and homestead on its shores. The potential upside and benefits are not lost, I mean the lease. That said, I have significant concerns about the approach and wonder if there's a true strategy anchoring the request for funding. One, communication has been poor. I was made aware via a neighbor that the Lake Shore residents were to receive correspondence by mailing notification to them on the 10:19 meeting. I never received this communication, which is alarming for a number of reasons, the primary one is that this is a legal requirement. If the step in the process is being handled casually, who's to say other aspects of the project planning process haven't been handled similarly with a lack of thorough and careful diligence? This is a large oversight. And one that was amongst the easiest to avoid, so my confidence is shaken, how is this miss even possible with such high stakes for residents? Who's accountable? Two, regardless of the proposed solutions to clean up the lake and the rationale behind him, are the comps we're looking at to validate these solutions mirror images of the conditions found in Tainter? It doesn't appear so. How can we trust the data that doesn't have contextual relevance? Three, before we even land on a potential preferred treatment approach, how are we measuring progress and how are we defining quote "success" end quote? Or quote "failure" end quote? As a result of this massive investment at the hands of the community and its landowners. Any project driven by the large public investment needs clear markers for evaluation. This is table stakes for such an endeavor. Can we currently answer the straightforward question, quote, "How will we determine whether the plan is working?" And if it is, how will we know it's sustainable? If it isn't, then what? End quote. The next critical question I've seen on POV, points of view, of, on from the Lake District Project Leaders, who are accountable if we don't see results? Who is accountable if we don't see results? Surely property owners can't be expected to hand over piles of funding year after year without knowing how we're measuring success? And what if this method of measurement says we're failing in our efforts? And in doing so, failing in our responsibility to the taxpayers as stewards of their pay-ins. Quote irresponsible, end quote, doesn't begin to describe the situation at large sums, if large sums are invested to no gain with no recourse or accountability for negative result. I would urge the council to have clear answers to this very basic project planning questions before determining the best next steps to restore and refurbish Lake Tainer. You have eyes and, you have the eyes and expectations of the community on you at this moment. And while I would love nothing more than for our two little girls to swim in a clean, algae-free water in late summer, and for the value of our properties to increase as the water quality increases, without proper project planning and the execution rooted in science, a verbally high confidence evidence that, and verifiably high-quality evidence and data, and without the promise of a thorough and transparent communication and education to all involved with and impacted by funding and water treatment decision-making, I can't in good conscience support these well-intended efforts. I look forward to hearing the points of view on defining the measured project success and failure, and who's caught holding the bag of things don't go accord, or if things don't go according to plan. Thank you for reading this and serving the best interests of our broader community. George and Jessica Rash. And. On Wednesday, October 19th, at 8:40, 8:54 AM, Tom Bilsey submitted the following, good evening Dunn County Board of Supervisors, my name is Tom Bilsey and I live at E5407 778 Avenue, Menominee, as President of the Friends of the Red Cedar Basin, FOT RCB. I've been active in the Lake District LD project. During the October 11th PR&amp;D meeting, there was mention of not, of us not using all the quote "tools" in our toolbox, end quote, I think our intentions weren't received the way we intended. We propose more than cleaning up the green and reducing sediment. Improving these two issues alone would be tremendous success, but our true focus includes making our water safer and the land more, lake more usable. Areas of safety would include, but not limited to, reducing and working to eliminate cyanobacteria. Cyanobacteria is what causes blue-green algae and is linked to several health issues. There is a link on cyanobacteria in the flyer packets that the board supervisors received. The issue of more usable lake, of a more usable lake can include reducing sediment, improving recreational opportunities, allowing riparian properties access to the water, et cetera. An additional area of usability might include the opportunity to swim in the lake after the middle of June. Being able to swim in Tainer Lake is never a sure thing. My point by explaining our proposal is to show that the LD, Lake District, can attack many different problems besides green and sediment. The next area I'd like to discuss is a comment made at the September 27th PR&amp;D meeting. During the discussion, a suggestion was made to include a board member on the interim board with a quote "descending opinion," end quote, of the LD, Lake District. I think there is a time and place for everyone to express their opinion on the LD. I also believe the debate is on the, a subject can be healthy. I further believe that including someone in the LD isn't fully engaged in the development of the LD is a bad idea. When the inaugural meeting comes, anyone can run for a board position, but until that time, everyone should be working towards the goal of putting together the best LD possible. Thank you, Tom Bilsey. And, the final one. On Wednesday, October 19th, 2022, at 3:50 PM, Tim Stanton submitted the following, hello Andrew, I've attached a document related to Lake District. I'm also sending it to each board member, thanks, Tim. Dated October 19th, 2022. My wife Kate Cruz Stanton and I have closely followed discussions relating to forming of Tainer Lake District. We have several concerns related to this proposal. A primary concern relates to the transparency of information provided to the affected property owners and their opportunity for questions and feedback. Statutes require the county board to mail notice of the August 9th public hearing to all potentially affected property owners. We did not receive that notice. Monday morning, we talked with our county clerk, who said he'd heard some of the people received it and some people did not. We checked with everyone who could think of and did a little digging and found that many people who did not receive that letter. Tim K. Stanton, AJ Johnson, Barb and Dave Kleist, Bob and Chris Bachelor, Matt Cromery, George and Jess Rash, Rich and Carleen, whose last names I do not know, and if they, they have an A-frame where John and Lou Russell used to live. Greg Wilson, who favors establishing the district, said he would have noticed mail sent out by the county, he did not remember receiving such a notice. We asked people on the Lake Tainer Reports and Activities Facebook page if they had received a mailing notice, those indicated that they did not receive the notice are listed below. Ruine Federal, Colby, Pam, Tom Cray, Alice Byrow, Susan Brill, Julie Lammer, Jeff Sorensen, Kelly Anne, last name question mark, Darren Ho- Hoyland, Nancy Fellow-Moirin, Mike Colestead. Jane Peterson does not remember receiving notice. Carrie Tuttle-Butera said she may have received the notice or saw information on Facebook, she didn't remember, no one responded yes. A check with acquaintance on Facebook inquiries did not constitute a significant, a scientific poll, but I'm puzzled, these people have mailing addresses in Menominee, East Oak Claire, Colfax, Elkmont, and the Minneapolis-St. Paul metro area, what happened? What percentage of potentially affected property owners received notice of the public hearing? As you know, formation of the district creates a branch of government with power to tax property owners, please consider this in formulating a decision, thank you. Thus ends public comment.
Thank you, Andrew. Allow me to also note from my earlier, none of the called role, vast majority have been, you've been very, very good about attendance and about letting the appropriate chairs know, so thank you for that. Onto appointments, item seven. You have the appointments in front of you. Do I have a motion to approve the appointments Supervisor Larry Bjork? Supervisor Steen, seconds. Any, oh, any further comment? Seeing none, all in favor?
Oh wait, oh wait, Gary Steen has requested to speak.
Oh, sorry.
I'm getting ready to go.
Alright, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Reported County Manager, Chris.
Good evening, everyone. You have in front of you the purchase orders over $40,000. This month, all of those are hot mix for the highway department. I don't believe there should be any questions about that, but just in case. Okay. Secondly, I wanted to make you aware that there has been a resolution filed for the creation of a new tax increment district. The district will basically is taken on by the City of Menominee, well, it essentially runs from here to the airport around the east side of the city through to the old, not old, because it, but the former or now dormant golf course, the Chippewa Valley Golf Course. And it is largely through its processes, has one final joint review board hearing left and, but looks like it will be put into place. And so I wanted to make you aware of that, we closed a tax increment district earlier this year, late last year, and early this year. And the development in that then brought us in significant additional revenue, about 230-some thousand dollars, which helped us to be able to use that for this year's budget, so. And then the last, oh, any questions about that? Yes.
Yeah, um, I'm still, like, could you go over what the tax incremental district, how it works?
How it works? So, in preparation for that question, so I know, but newly know, but Corporation Council, Lane, has more first and has agreed to speak to that, so Nick.
Yes. So the, the tax increment districts to which the county manager is referred are from, are City of Menominee districts. It's a new proposed district, the purpose of it is primarily for, I guess, development, mostly commercial, although some residential development is, is proposed. Tax increment district works by, once the, once the boundaries of the district are identified, the real property that's contained within the district or proposed district, whatever value that has at that time is set, and I think it's called the base value. And so then during the life of the tax increment district, taxes will be collected on these properties or they'll be assessed on these properties at that value. The municipality creating the district then uses the increased value, the taxes from the increase in value to help fund projects like infrastructures, streets, sewer, water, streetlights, that kind of thing. And they may offer other economic incentives. And so, they use the, they use, so the, the base the base value is set and taxes will continue on at that value, and then once the district closes, ideally, the property values will have increased sufficiently so that all of the projects will have been paid for out of that increase, and then when the district closes, the, the new value of the property becomes, goes into the tax roll. It doesn't necessarily mean that taxes will shoot right up, because there are ways of the, all taxing authorities have to use the mill rate in, you know, dollars per, you know, thousand in value or whatever, in order to calculate what the taxes are, so they try to figure out a rate that, you know, meets the needs of all the municipalities at the time, and they get direction from the Department of Revenue, but so they essentially take the, the taxes on the extra value, pay the project costs, and then when it closes, it comes back on the tax rolls. And this one, I think, is set. I think it's set to close in 2037, I think.
Twenty years from last night.
Yeah, oh, 2032, or no, 2042. Okay. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, and then just to help me visualize, in the document, it says, is I'm looking at, I think, 18% residential, less than 35% retail. And then that leaves about 53% between, what, industrial and woodland slash farmland use?
I, I think so, I mean, this isn't, it's not a county activity. We're talking about it tonight mainly because we own property, the county owns property in the proposed district. The neighbors of Dunn County, the Judicial Center, the, this building and the surrounding property, the transit building and some of the agricultural land to our north is, is included in the district, so, I mean, I'm not, I'm not familiar to a detailed level with what they're proposing, just generally what it is they're trying to do.
Yeah, I was just trying to get my head around the numbers, and I think these numbers were new properties or new stuff listed, so I think that helps me.
Yeah, I, I think one of their stated goals was to condense residential housing a little more than it has been. So I think they're doing a minimum of three residences per acre is what they're proposing. But I think most of it's going to end up being commercial, they also talked about expanding the what do you call it? The park, the industrial park, yeah.
Yeah. Andrew, if you, if you'd like after, I'm happy to chat with you with my city council hat on.
Yeah, I know, this helped me, so thank you.
The other place that is a really, has a really valuable amount of materials is on the Department of Revenue website, if you just go out and look, they have a lot of questions and, question and answer, answer as well as a little video, it's about as much information as you'd ever like to know about tiffs and tids on the DOR website. And then the last thing that I wanted to make you aware of was, we also know this isn't a huge amount of money, but I think it's important to note these things. We received notification about two to three weeks ago that Dunn County would be eligible for funding from the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. It essentially is a piece of ARPA funding that comes to counties and it is pretty, it's wide open in how it can be spent. For Dunn County, it will be $50,000 in 2022 and $50,000 in 2023. And it essentially went to counties that have some federal property, some federal land within their county, so not all counties received it because some simply don't. We have a very small amount, and there was a base level of $50,000, which is why we received $50,000. But that money came, we made a decision because it appears as if our budget for 2022 is in good shape. And because it's coming this late in the year and it's really difficult to do a budget adjustment, it would have had to have been through the processes in order to come to the, the November meeting. We decided that we would place it in to use for 2023. So we will eventually do a budget adjust, or sorry, a carryforward to move that money from 2022 to 2023, so there will be $100,000 in 2023. Any questions about that?
Supervisor Lino.
Yes, where do we have federal property?
Oftentimes, it's post offices. If they're not rented, because oftentimes the postal service rents post offices, but it can be post offices. It's in, I don't, you know, I don't know, it's a little bit of, sometimes a little bit of DNR land can be federal property.
And I, I believe we have at least a tiny bit of that, because one of the qualifiers was nature conservancy land, just imagine.
I mean, our payment in lieu of taxes is very, very small, but versus, for instance, like some of those northern counties, Ashland and Bayfield, Forest County, those counties received about a half a million dollars.
Alright, thank you very much, I learned something new.
That's all I have for this evening.
Alright. Onto nine, reports of committees, the Executive Committee proposed FY 2023 budget and levy, which I'm gonna hand to you again, Chris.
And I'm gonna quickly hand it off to Piata, who has prepared a PowerPoint presentation which went out to you in an email yesterday afternoon, and then she will walk through that this evening as well. Screen.
Alright, good evening, everyone. So we prepared a really short slide presentation for you, just to go at a high level. First couple slides to give you a little bit of a backdrop about our budget, we'll go into the budget itself and some of the steps that were taken to balance the budget. If my, so some of the objectives here too, as I said, we're gonna overview at a higher lever, level, the levy limit, our debt, where we are with that. Our general fund balance again for a backdrop for, for you to consider. Review also the proposed budget itself, even though I have a one PowerPoint presentation on that, it's which is really high level, but in your packet, you should have received a more by department PDF file. Then we're gonna go into the executive committee recommendations. So levy limit, where we are at. So right now, as of, for our 2022, excuse me, I have this window here. And I'm not sure how to minimize it, okay, there you go, so I can see my content. So levy limits, so the preliminary levy limit I have here is at 23 and a half million, which is an increase of 1 million from last year budget, or of course, this year, 2022. I'm already living in 2023. So when you're looking at our debt, also as of December 31st of 2021, per the audit report, our debt is about that 32.9 mil. It's also the general obligation, our debt is at 17.2%, which is, makes up the county's overall debt limit of 191. And we have therefore unused debt of 159 million. So that was our starting point for 2023 budget. So of course, I want to highlight some of the key items, reference our fund balance. So and again, this is per our audit, this ending December 31st of 21. We have a general fund balance of 17.2 million, which is an increase of 4.9 from 2020. So last time we've met, provided a little bit of a content as to what made up that number, but I'll be more than happy to review that with you if, if you need to. Also, what does that mean to our fund balance? So that is, as far as percentage, is at 60.6, and that is really our 60% of, I'm not gonna say it butcher this one, 60% of our annual overall county budget. So this is really good, because that recommended is at a top 33. So Executive Committee, when we met, they were giving us a directive to decrease the original proposed budget, which had a deficit of 4.75 million by 250,000. So what we did is we went back to the management, and I want to highlight some of the key items that were considered to reduce the proposed deficit. So one position was eliminated, a new, new position request, if I say, was eliminated. That was originally submitted by the Sheriff's Office. We also vacate, eliminated one vacant position in administration. And that's an existing position that became vacant as IT restructured. Also, there were updates relative to state revenues. We had most current or debt available on grants. And also, we had more months of operating expenses that help us kind of project and help project at the end of the year and help us build a budget for 2023. We also went back and analyzed the vacant positions in reference to eligible health benefits. So we used a methodology, originally when we submitted the budget, we made the assumption that all vacant positions will be filled you, with a family benefits, which it's substantial. So we went back and we looked at existing data to help us understand how employees are electing for benefits. So based on our current employees and the population that's eligible for health benefits, that 60% elected family, 25 are a single, and 15 do not elect at all. So we use this methodology to apply these percentages for our vacant positions. So that also had a reduction. So that also had a reduction. We also looked at our vacancy ratio. Vacancy vacancy ratio, uh we estimated to be at two, two point eight two percent. So what that means out of the overall county employees, we expect to have about two point eight vacancies. At any given time, right now, we're trending roughly close approximately about six percent. So this was a really, um, we're comfortable with this two point eight two percent. And also, we had some decreased overall staffing cost by transitioning contracted personnel. So there were two departments, this was the transit, and then we had the, my goodness. Some facilities, thank you. So what happened is originally they submitted a budget and that was accounted for as contracted. The further discussions and uh department's decision uh was to look. Look to see what would some of the cost savings be if we brought bought them as an employee. So one of the big factor here is to retain talent for one. And at the same time, we wanted to see the, we wanted to, we wanted to see what that impact, financial impact would be. So if we took the cost based on what we paid the third party and the cost that would uh have. Would allow us to bring him on board, there were some, there were some savings. To that. So this is the revenue. Yes, yes, sir.
Supervisor Dean.
Uh, yes, uh, uh, on your decreased overall staffing cost by transitioning contracted personnel to county. A few years ago, we did just the opposite. We contracted our stuff uh to save money and in the end uh. It didn't seem to work out if I'm following this correctly. And secondarily, I was against that at the start. Uh, you lose control over the people that are working for you. So I'm glad to see we're coming back. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for the comment. So this is at a high level revenue and expense balanced budget. And again, in your packet, you will have more detailed by each department. So we have a revenue of ninety-two point five. Uh, million and expenses, of course, are ninety-two point five as well. So when we met with the executive committee last week, we've presented them with a couple scenarios. And the scenario that um they acted on was that um. We close or balance our budget with a deficit of three point two million. Originally, we started with that four, we made some reduction, we arrive at that three point two. So the executive committee uh action was to apply two point three million of fund balance. Specifically towards inclu- increases in salaries and wages and new position requests. The remain, the remaining balance of nine hundred and two thousands to issue debt. Also, what would, if we issued that, also wanted to highlight what impact will that have? On our fund balance, on our um general obligation debt to the debt limit. So that slightly uh went down to seventeen point seven two percent. If you look at the fund balance, it is at fifty-two point five five from the original sixty point six percent. So here I just did a quick debt analysis based on that we issued debt of one million in twenty twenty-four. And three million preceding years. And of course, us here is to, even that line out, you see the peak in twenty twenty-six. But eventually, we want to see that to steady down, and that is based on the um. Borrowing debt of three million dollars each year to fund uh capital improvement plan. And of course, any questions for me?
Supervisor Lina.
I I have a quick question. Um, so we have, uh, we went up four million. On our, on our fund balance, correct, from last year? Is what you said, right?
Last five, yep, four point eight.
Okay, now was that four point five or or the four million approximately? Was that due to the bond? Payment and you know, the new bond issue, that type of thing, or is this a separate issue? Because we had received those bond, bond payment funds and then what we haven't really paid off the debt. That that was being refinanced essentially. So I was just wondering, is that real money or is money already spoken for?
It's real money.
It's real money.
Yes, so we put back four point eight or roughly four point nine million into the general fund.
Okay.
And a lot of it had to, was a DHS did um. Put back quite a bit, and one of the reasons being is that during the COVID, there was additional federal and state funding. Uh, I don't want to call ARPA, but COVID monies that kind of helped um. Draw on some of that and leave the levy out on the, on the table and some of those other revenue sources, so. And the other one was the nursing home, the neighbors, they also put back.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that that four point eight mil, you know, was. Money that wasn't already spoken for, that's all.
Well, no.
All right, thank you much.
Supervisor Vogel.
Um, thank you. I was curious, so the the added additional borrowing. Um, we didn't, we decided not to borrow the three million for capital improvements, right? Because. So this will not be as much as we had planned earlier. And how long can we kind of plug? The difference with our general fund and borrowing, like how sustainable? Will our operations be, or we're gonna hit a wall someday? Where we can't afford.
Yes.
And the general.
I don't have that slide in here anymore. I'm sorry, I can't see it.
In in a general sense, I would say that we are doing fairly well for the next several years. Yeah, in the longer run, it's really hard to say because the funding situation, state and federal and and county level. Is so variable year to year, but this, this is easily within our comfort zone, I think, at the moment.
Right, and to answer your question, I had a slide on here for. The first time uh when we met with the executive committee, I showed a trend. On our general fund and also trend on our debt. When we looked at uh the trend as far as our fund balance. There were two years, I think, believe two thousand nine nineteen, two thousand twenty and twenty-one had anomalies. But prior to that, we drew, you know, it was pretty steady. There were years that we actually went to fund bal- balance to pull in funds, and there was one year that. We actually put back to general fund, so it's really stable. There was no significant, except this one here with the COVID. And then, so when I looked at the debt, and this is the one slide that I kept, because this kind of shows us. All the way through twenty-two, uh twenty thirty-six, if we borrow three million to support our C I P. Not any, not adding any more debt. Thank you. Does that help? Thank you. Yep, so there's a lot of unknown and a lot of uncertainty, given the current environment and how the market fluctuates. So that's going to impact cost has gone up, especially impacted highway specifically. Because of the cost of materials and cost of equipment, vehicles are going up. For sheriff to replace their uh squad cars, so there's always going to be an increased wages. To keep up with the cost of living. But then also, keep in mind that our levy, it's, it's not as much, it doesn't compensate. For the increase in cost. Um, but the little levy, and that's based on equalized values. And so we also saw a significant change in there as well, which was in our favor this year. Excellent question, thank you.
Anyone else?
You know, one thing I also wanted to mention that during the executive committee meeting, we talked about the the borrowing. Looking, we'll continue on analyzing monthly review, the expenditures as we get closer to the borrowing. To determine if there might be a need to borrow. We've shown some savings in the past. So we'll, we'll watch it, we we might not need to, but that's unknown, but to balance the budget, that was our gap.
Yeah, in 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 particular, if our vacancy rate stays as high as it currently is, we we may well not need to to borrow that money. Uh, Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Thank you. Um, I'm not sure of the amount, but I think Dunn County does have some investments. And now with the interest rates going up higher, how is that increase in income from those investments? How is that reported?
So we budgeted that as an income in our admin budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Viata. That's a, that's it for the report for that for this evening, and we will come back with the final budget numbers next month.
Yes, and next month I will have it on the uh county website, which will have more detailed budget. By each department, by each line, salaries, uh fringes, operating revenue, all different sources, including levy. And fund balance and debt. So you'll have more of a detail that you can dive into and that will be available at that time.
Supervisor Rogers, did you?
So I guess I just, I understand that we had a nice return back to the general fund because of a lot of the. Effects of COVID and that, so it gave us an opportunity to to use some of that money this year. I certainly have a concern moving forward when we don't have that uh. Them expenses are gonna come back that uh that allowed us to put the money back. And with the borrowing, moving forward, everything going up, I I guess I'm a little concerned about the borrowing of the money, but. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Supervisor Rogers. Anyone else? All right, this time for sure. Thank you, Viata.
Thank you.
All right, on to. Item ten, consideration of resolutions, reports, ordinances from the standing committees, beginning with judiciary and law. Resolution supporting increased county child support funding. Supervisor Calabrese, do you want to speak to that? Oh, um, yeah, why don't we, why don't we get a motion for that first and then? It will make our clerk happier. Uh, motion by Supervisor Kinnear, second by Supervisor Morehouse. All right, motion on the floor?
This is a resolution from the Child Support Agency. Uh, and the resolution details uh the benefits of the Child Support Agency. It's one of the most effective ways to. Uh, of, it's an anti-poverty program for uh for families and for children in particular. And um, and what the resolution is calling for is asking the state legislature. Uh, to increase their funding to the county child support agencies. Because due to the cost of uh running the department, uh state funding matches failed to keep up. Um, and due to that, they may need to eliminate positions, increase caseloads for fewer workers, and just reduce services in general. And um, asking for this funds, they want to remind everybody that um. Every dollar that the state gives to county child support agencies is matched by almost two dollars from the federal government. And so they are asking for the state of Wisconsin for five million dollars uh extra in their next budget. Which would result in nine point seven million from the federal government to uh keep this very important agency going.
Thank you, Supervisor Calabrese. Any questions? Any other speaking to the resolution? Supervisor Steen. Oh, nope. All right. Um, on the resolution that was presented to you, uh on the adoption part, it said offered this nineteenth day of October twenty twenty-three. The clerk took a administrative function and changed it to twenty twenty-two, so the resolution does have twenty twenty-two on it. Thank you, Andrew. All right, um, go ahead and vote now, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, uh, ten A two, resolution rescinding twenty sixteen dash ninety-eight. Uh, do I have a motion? Uh, Supervisor Bauer and Supervisor Calabrese, so. Speaking to the motion, Supervisor Calabrese.
I defer to the corporation council, please, Mr. Lang.
Absolutely can.
Thank you.
This is a, this is a resolution that rescinds a resolution that was adopted by the county board in two thousand sixteen. Uh, in in it pertains to the um str- the organizational structure of the med- of medical examiners. Um, the Department of the Medical Examiner, the Medical Examiner's Office. Um, in two thousand fifteen, Dunn County had a medical examiner and. A deputy medical examiner um that helped out. And in in a fairly short time period. We uh Dunn County entered into an intergovernmental agreement with Oaklair County to provide medical examiner services to them. Uh, they have a a more populous county, more. Um, you know, urban, uh, they have substantially more work for medical examiners than Dunn County did. And so we had to add staff to the medical examiner's office. This resolution created positions, unclassified positions called deputy medical examiners. And then it set their wages at ten dollars per hour. Uh, the ten dollars per hour has been. It's it's outgrowing the value of the work they do, the wages they should receive um. Uh, are higher, so it was necessary to um rescind this resolution. In order to. Have human resources appraise or value uh the the wages of the position. Uh, and they also, in connection with uh the uh. Wage grids are being placed in the wage grid as a. Um, instead of, you know, their, instead of their. Positions being governed by this single resolution, they're gonna be in the pay grid now, so this just eliminates that resolution that. Established the positions and set their wages at ten dollars an hour.
Supervisor Calabrese.
And and could I add, I think it's, it was that it was kept at ten dollars an hour, right? Like not just said, so it couldn't go.
That's correct. It it says ten dollars an hour, and so until this resolution is rescinded, we must. Follow it.
Any speaking to the resolution or questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, on to ten V uh from the Planning Resource Development Committee, the Tantil Lake Rehabilitation District Public Hearing Report. For the county board consideration. Um, Supervisor Quinn. Uh, microphone if you would.
Thank you. Uh, just a few minutes to to uh. Provide some sort of context for where we're at tonight. And then uh the committee would like to propose a resolution to the board as to how to move forward in this process. So uh. Uh, explanation of kind of where we're at, the 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 report summarize, summarizes in pretty good big detail, but just briefly to. For all of our benefits, the process for establishing the Lake District is prescribed in the state statute. And it includes some very specific steps, criteria, and time. And it includes some very specific steps, criteria, and timelines, and the committee's been, um, aware of those. Last summer, the county received a petition signed by property owners requesting the establishment of a Lake District. County clerk verified that sufficient signatures were provided as required by the statute. The board accepted that petition, referred the item back to the Planning, Resource and Development Committee to hold a public hearing and repair, prepare a formal report back to the board again, as required by statute. Uh, public, the PRD committee held a public hearing in the summer, prepared the report that is presented in your packet tonight. Uh, after we accept the report, the board will have 90 days to take action on the request. So that would be most likely at our January meeting, considering we don't generally meet in December. The PID committee is by motion in a while going to request that the board pass a resolution returning the item, once you accept it, returning the item to the committee for development of a formal order that could be considered by the board on establishing the district. So we won't be, as the agenda notes, voting on this tonight, but, um, we would, we are going to recommend that the board prefer this back to the committee for development of a formal order that would be in the appropriate format for the board to consider if they want to establish a district. That order will address several considerations, including nominations for the initial board of the district, establishment of the district boundaries, and several other requests, and address several other requests made by the applicants. I would maybe, uh, draw your, draw your attention to, on page six of the report, the, the, the report outlines four points that the applicants must meet in order for the, uh, resolution to be approved. Uh, first, that the petition has been signed by a requisite number of property owners. Uh, as I said, the committee did look at all four of these. And, uh, while we're, and we're not in a formal motion, we are, we did an informal review of them. First one is petition has been signed by a requisite number of property owners. We did feel like the applicant spent that criteria. Uh, the post-district is necessary. It is clear that Lake Tainer has significant problems and that remediation of those problems would be, is, is necessary for the, for our community. Three, public health, comfort, convenience, safety, or welfare will be promoted. Um, the committee felt that that this was the case. Uh, I, I think the committee felt that it was probably a little unfortunate. And this is referred to in the, you know, one of the comments tonight. It was perhaps a little unfortunate that the organizers decided to frame the establishment of the district around a set of fairly narrow practices. Uh, I can see why they did that, but it, it obviously is, um, somewhat controversial. But the committee felt that uh, the reality is that the, the, the practices that the district adopts and funds will be decided by the residents of the district. And, uh, they may be, they may include those practices as early proposed, or they may include others. But they will be decided by the residents, and the residents need to make sure to exercise their democratic authority. And that's the way it is with the lake districts all across the state. Uh, the fourth criteria is that the property in the district will benefit. And it was clearly felt that, uh, that potentially this project, if it's successful, would benefit the, the use and the value of the property in the district. So, uh, we're not going to act on, on approving one where they're, act on one or the other on the, on the decision to establish a district, but those are the considerations that the, that the committee had. And, uh, before I make a resolution to, for next step, I'm wondering if, would it be okay to ask for any questions from the board?
Uh, yeah, well, I think what we'll probably want to do is two, uh, motions, one motion to approve the report, and then a second motion to refer the topic back to committee for further consideration and, uh, potentially resolution. So, does any?
I, I'd move to approve the report.
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor, uh, Gary Bjork seconds. You got that? Great. Um, any questions about the report for Supervisor Quinn? Supervisor Kinnear?
It's not a question, but are we approving the report? Are we accepting it?
Accepting.
Uh.
Is it different?
No, we're accepting the report.
I'm sorry, my recommendation is approval of the report because it is, I mean, it's, I, either one is okay, I guess. Um, the report contains the essence of what the county board is going to be basing its findings on and order.
The, the report does not have a formal recommendation in it, so.
Yeah, no, but it has in, information in it.
Right, I understand that.
Thank you. We just had that conversation seconds ago, so, good question. Uh, Supervisor Hagen.
Um, I have some questions, but I don't know which of these two it would fall under. I'm just some like procedural, procedural clarification question, so would this be a good point to ask them?
Sure, let's start there.
All right, sounds good. And if not, we can move on. Um, one of the things that, uh, I noticed in, uh, watching some of the previous meetings were that some public comments were talking about, um, the signing process and getting signatures for the petitions. And some of them, um, requested either like a redo or something like that. My question is, is there a process for people who sign the petition to revoke their signatures or anything like that? From what I read, I didn't find anything like that. Is that true?
Um, not that I know of.
There's no like date or anything?
Well, the staff has been helping us with a lot of this. I'd refer to Chase to, uh, give a comment on that.
All right, without objection? You're good.
Everyone? Um, so specifically to the question of, once a petition is, is signed and submitted, um, as far as the signatures go, um, my understanding based on the statute and the way it's written is that, um, once a petition or the signature is signed on a petition and is turned in, that is for the record as far as what the petition is submitted. Um, certainly, a person could have made a comment at a public hearing, at the public hearing regarding a dissension of, you know, wanting to not, uh, have that counted, but at this point, it's, it's part of the record, so.
Yeah, in Wisconsin statute for the, uh, petition of the Lake District, they didn't outline anything as far as I saw, so what's signed is signed, it sounds like, so.
Correct.
And then another question I had, um, another question was the, um, notice of the public comment. I believe the notification was, um, like how these meetings are notified, and then there was a question of mail out to the individual people. Was that, um, correct? And was that met?
Yes, so the process is that after the signatures were verified, the county clerk is directed to send notification to all property owners um, that there would be a public hearing, uh, for this particular one, it would be the August 9th, um, Planning Resource and Development Committee, that, uh, information was processed. Uh, it was the public hearing notice that was posted, it was sent to all the residents. What happened after it was dropped in the mail, I, I don't know. Um, there were some reports that some individuals did not receive it in the mail. There were some reports from individuals that did receive it in the mail. Um, I know that there have been some issues with the mail, um, and beyond that, we couldn't control it. The, the steps that we took to negate that were putting it in the paper, um, posting it on the website. We also did a series of social media releases on the Dunn County official Facebook page, the What's Happening In A Menominee Facebook page, and the Tener Lake Activities and Reports page, to try to make sure that the information was disseminated to as many people as possible.
Cool, thank you.
You good then?
Um, I have another question. That's all right.
All right.
All right, thank you. Um, so the formation of a Lake District, my question in my mind is, is the uh, issue for the lake, um, uh, being solved by the formation of a Lake District and only by the Lake District? Like, do Lake Districts have, uh, special access to, um, grants or outside funding or matching funds or whatever? That isn't necessarily available through other means?
I think that's probably beyond the scope of what we're doing tonight, but if you wanted to go to the PRD meeting, that might be a more appropriate venue for the rather lengthy answer I expect is associated with that question.
All right, thank you. Um, and then something for Lake County, because the county has property on the lake. Um, do Lake Districts, this might have to go back to PRD, I'm sorry. Um, do Lake Districts have, um, any authority to establish ordinances for like, lake access or anything like that?
Chase, do you?
Yeah, so in the report, there, I believe there's some comments, uh, in the report that address that question to some degree. But specifically to creating ordinances, there are, um, outlining, uh, or already in existence ordinances that manage shoreline. So as far as properties, you know, through the county shoreline ordinance, a Lake District, um, typically any further restrictions that they may have in, in the ordinance format would be as far as, uh, what happens on the water as far as boating, uh, slow no-wake zones, things like that. And those typically aren't, uh, done solely by the Lake District. Those are in conjunction with the local township. Typically townships are the ones that set the slow no-wake type, type activities. Um, obviously consultation with DNR on certain things as well, but, um, there is some latitude that a Lake District does have the ability to introduce and, um, if you, if you will lobby for that type of activity, but it's not necessary, their sole responsibility and authority.
All right, thank you. And then, um, that, a couple of others, but those would probably be, I think, best safe for the PRD committee, so.
PRD or possibly, uh, the discussion in January, depending. But hopefully PRD will solve that for you. Uh, any, any further speaking or questions? Uh, yes, Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first of all, I just want to say, uh, thank you for the information that was provided in the packet as far as the pro and con and the discussion. I, I don't, I can't remember an issue where we've had, uh, a better exchange of ideas and presentations of, of people's ideas. Uh, secondly, uh, reading through the whole thing, I was happy to see that, uh, egg runoff was not the, uh, reason we had green algae in the lake. It might be part, but in the past, you know, I, I think, uh, it's been easy to say that that's the problem. So I'm kind of glad to see that there was other things that were discussed. And then thirdly, uh, 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 in my district is the Elk Lake, uh, project or Elk Lake Rehab- Rehabilitation District, and they also have an Elk Lake Association. And they have found that their association is vital in dispensing information to members of the Lake District. And then the Lake District, you know, does the, uh, legal work of getting things done, and they were very pleased with grants that they had received where, uh, water that had run into, was running into the lake each spring was diverted into a, a place where they could remove the sediment. So I think there's a real place for, uh, the volunteers and the people that, uh, want to get out and beat the bush for something they believe in, but you really kind of need a district to, uh, be able to, to apply and receive the funds. Anyway, that's what I was told by Elk Lake. So, nice job on the report. It was, it was fantastic reading. I mean, you know, I mean, it wasn't like I had to do soybeans or anything, so, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bjork. Any others speaking to the motion to approve the report? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, um, now we would need a motion to refer back to PRD. Supervisor Breslin moves. Supervisor Quinn seconds, I believe is the order that was in. Sean Breslin, sorry. Um, any speaking to the motion to refer back to committee? Supervisor Quinn?
Uh, just to, uh, what that means is that the committee will, what it, what needs, the next step is to prepare a formal order in that addresses the, the concerns in the statute and bring that to the board for the board to consider whether to approve the final order or not. So the work of the committee over the next period of time will be to answer some of the questions that need to be included in that, in that order, including, for example, nomination of the initial board that will, serve for the first three months.
Thank you, Supervisor Quinn. Any further speaking? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to refer back to committee?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. It's back in your court, Tom. Okay. On to, uh, Executive Committee. We have a series of, um, bookkeeping resolutions for budget adjustment. We, um, had a couple of errors with the way it was. Chris, did you want to?
Okay, so if these look a little familiar to you, I, I just kind of really mushed them up. Um, so I apologize for the fact that you're going to have to go through three-year-old call votes to clean this up, but what happened was, um, last month, I told you that there was a revised agenda, um, but that didn't happen. Um, so it felt cleanest to bring this back to you and ask you to go through the budget adjustments from August, September, and now the one from October, to make sure that you had the, not only the resolutions, but the supporting documentation that matched them. And we're making, uh, decisions based on the right information and complete information. So my apologies again for the, the mishap part of it. This is a reason, hopefully not an excuse, but a reason, um, August, without an August meeting, um, those roll forward to September, then there are September actions that happen, so it just got mushed up and it was my fault. So we're going to, um, bring them back and just make sure that they're voted upon properly.
I would just like to clarify that, um, the correction and the updates were provided to the county clerk, and the county clerk was pretty sure that he had updated everything. But apparently that didn't happen, so it, it does not fall with the county manager. This one falls with the county clerk.
The county board chair probably should have been on top of it, too. All right. So to get this all cleaned up from last time, we're going to take these one at a time. Uh, first, the resolution approving FY 2022 budget adjustments for the Sheriff's Department and Health Department from August. Do I have a motion? Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Calabrese seconds. And this is a roll call vote.
Supervisor Headland.
Yeah.
Supervisor Headland votes, yes. Supervisor Johnson.
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson votes, yes. Supervisor Kinnear. Supervisor Kinnear votes, yes. Supervisor Keter.
Yes.
Supervisor Keter votes, yes. Supervisor Lino.
Yes.
Supervisor Lino votes, yes. Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Morehouse votes, yes. Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Prochnow votes, yes. Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Quinn votes, yes. Supervisor Robinson.
Yes.
Supervisor Robinson votes, yes. Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers votes, yes. Supervisor Score. Supervisor Score votes, yes. Supervisor Steen.
Yeah.
Supervisor Steen votes, yes. Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Thomas votes, yes. Supervisor Vandermeulen. Supervisor Vandermeulen votes, yes. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Vogel votes, yes. Supervisor Willsey. Supervisor Willsey votes, yes. Supervisor Whitzel. Supervisor Whitzel votes, yes. Supervisor Zons. Supervisor Zons votes, yes. Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Bauer votes, yes. Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Barrier votes, yes. Supervisor Gary Bjork. Supervisor Gary Bjork votes, yes. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Larry Bjork votes, yes. Supervisor Pat Breslin.
Yeah.
Supervisor Pat Breslin votes, yes. Supervisor Sean Breslin. Supervisor Sean Breslin votes, yes. Supervisor Calabrese. Supervisor Calabrese votes, yes. Supervisor Gilbert. Supervisor Gilbert votes, yes. Supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Hagan votes, yes. Supervisor Hartong. Supervisor Hartong votes, yes. That passes.
Chair McCullough also votes, yes.
Chair McCullough. Chair McCullough votes, yeah.
It's all good. Okay, uh, Res- Okay, uh, resolution two here, approving FY twenty twenty-two budget adjustments for highway, veteran services, human services, CJCC, and the Health Department. September, do I have a motion? Supervisor Steen and Supervisor Johnson seconds. And again, roll call vote.
Supervisor Johnson, Supervisor Johnson votes, yes, Supervisor Kinnear. Supervisor Kinnear votes, yes, Supervisor Keter.
Yes.
Supervisor Keter votes, yes, Supervisor Lino. Supervisor Lino votes, yes, Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Morehouse votes, yes, Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Prochnow votes, yes, Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Quinn votes, yes, Supervisor Robinson.
Yes.
Supervisor Robinson votes, yes, Supervisor Rogers. Supervisor Rogers votes, yes, Supervisor Score. Supervisor Score votes, yes, Supervisor Steen.
Yeah.
Supervisor Steen votes, yes, Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Thomas votes, yes, Supervisor Vandermeulen. Supervisor Vandermeulen votes, yes, Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Vogel votes, yes, Supervisor Willsey. Supervisor Willsey votes, yes, Supervisor Whitzel. Supervisor Whitzel votes, yes, Supervisor Zons. Supervisor Zons votes, yes, Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Bauer votes, yes, Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Barrier votes, yes, Supervisor Gary Bjork. Supervisor Gary Bjork votes, yes, Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Yes.
Supervisor Larry Bjork votes, yes, Supervisor Pat Breslin. Supervisor Pat Breslin votes, yes, Supervisor Breslin, Sean Breslin.
Yes.
Supervisor Sean Breslin votes, yes, Supervisor Calabrese. Supervisor Calabrese votes, yes, Supervisor Gilbert. Supervisor Gilbert votes, yes, Supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Hagan votes, yes, Supervisor Hartong. Supervisor Hartong votes, yes, Supervisor Headland. Supervisor Headland votes, yes, Chair McCullough.
Yes.
Chair McCullough votes, yes.
Motion passes. Number three, resolution approving FY twenty twenty-two budget adjustments for Health Department and Human Services, October. Uh, Supervisor Morehouse moves, Supervisor Hagan seconds. I I just realized I had mispronounced your name earlier, my apologies. Um, and again, roll call vote.
This will teach me to always update the internet. Uh, Supervisor Kinnear.
Supervisor Kinnear votes, yes, Supervisor Keter.
Yes.
Supervisor Keter votes, yes, Supervisor Lino. Supervisor Lino votes, yes, Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Morehouse votes, yes, Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Prochnow votes, yes, Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Quinn votes, yes, Supervisor Robinson.
Yes.
Supervisor Robinson votes, yes, Supervisor Rogers. Supervisor Rogers votes, yes, Supervisor Score. Supervisor Score votes, yes, Supervisor Steen.
Yes.
Supervisor Steen votes, yes, Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Thomas votes, yes, Supervisor Vandermeulen. Supervisor Vandermeulen votes, yes, Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Vogel votes, yes, Supervisor Willsey. Supervisor Willsey votes, yes, Supervisor Whitzel. Supervisor Whitzel votes, yes, Supervisor Zons.
Yeah.
Supervisor Zons votes, yes, Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Bauer votes, yes, Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Barrier votes, yes, Supervisor Gary Bjork. Supervisor Gary Bjork votes, yes, Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Yes.
Supervisor Larry Bjork votes, yes, Supervisor Pat Breslin. Supervisor Pat Breslin votes, yes, Supervisor Sean Breslin.
Yes.
Supervisor Sean Breslin votes, yes, Supervisor Calabrese. Supervisor Calabrese votes, yes, Supervisor Gilbert. Supervisor Gilbert votes, yes, Supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Hagan votes, yes, Supervisor Hartong. Supervisor Hartong votes, yes, Supervisor Headland.
Yes.
Supervisor Headland votes, yes, Supervisor Johnson.
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson votes, yes, Chair McCullough.
Yes.
Chair McCullough votes, yes.
Motion passes, okay. Uh,
That is the adult equivalent of I will not chew gum in class.
Lesson learned.
Something to that. Okay, uh, offered by the committee on regi- on administration, a resolution adopting a twenty twenty-three pay grid and other pay-related items, can I get a motion? Supervisor Zons moves, Supervisor Lee now seconds. Speaking to the motion, uh, Supervisor Headland?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair. Included in your packet, uh, is a copy of the resolution. Um, this is our up uh, dated or uh, updated proposal, uh, which is part of the budget that you saw earlier this evening, and and of course, the final draft will be next month. Um, the way i- it is proposed is uh, being in the center of that resolution, be it further resolved that for the calendar year twenty twenty-three, except for those employees represented by collective bargaining, payment in lieu of fringe benefits for eligible employees, uh, the rest shall receive an increase of three point five percent. Um, the uh, fringe benefit people will receive an increase of two point uh, two dollars and forty-five cents per hour, which is three point five percent also for them. Um, along with that, uh, it it's uh, keeps the um, grid adjustments, uh, each step to be two point seven five percent. And so of course, that two point seven five percent is based on the new numbers, which in each step six, center of the of each grade will be multiplied by one point oh three five, representing that three point five percent adjustment. Um, so this is, uh, again, part of and and is covered and financed to point uh, by the twenty twenty-three proposed budget mode.
Thank you, Supervisor Headland. Uh, speaking to the motion, questions? Supervisor Calabrese.
Can I be a pain and just point out that in the uh, third, be it further resolved, uh, it says in lieu of fringe benefits for eligible employees shall be increased? I think there should either not be a B or it should be increased, the D.
Uh, that is a, that is an excellent kind of pain to be in, we should totally put fix that.
I will fix that. I will also make sure that this is offered on the nineteenth day of October twenty twenty-two.
So typo fixes are well within the range of things. Any further speaking? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, on to announcements. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, November fifteenth. Important to remember that's going to be a Tuesday, because that's one of our statutorily determined meetings, um, here at seven o'clock PM. Are there any other announcements? Seeing none, we are adjourned.